All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome. As we begin our evening tonight, I'm going to ask you to join me in a moment of silence before a pledge of allegiance, and then we'll move along to roll call. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we'll do roll call.
Commissioner Assasi.
Present.
Commissioner Repart.
Here.
Commissioner Lanier.
Present.
Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, and commissioners, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner O'Connor?
Move.
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, we do have a translator with us tonight, so if you need assistance with translation services, you are welcome to request that. Do we have a translator?
Yes.
Yep.
You need to turn your mic on.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Good evening. We are pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services this evening. This includes interpretation during the meeting and for those who want to provide public comment. Buenas noches. Estamos complacidos de proveer servicios de interpretación en español esta noche. Esto incluye interpretación durante la reunión y para aquellos que quieran proveer de comentario público.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so for those of you who haven't attended one of our meetings before, I'll just walk you through a few expectations for tonight. We do have a long agenda before us, and we have multiple opportunities for public comment. So the very first one that I'm going to open momentarily is public comment on action items or agenda items tonight. Then we have a couple scheduled public hearings on obsolete property rehabilitation certificates, as well as an uptown bid assessment appeal. So if you want to be heard on those items, I'm going to ask you to stay put until I open up those opportunities for public comment. So a few things to just remind you of, and the rules are listed up there. This is a lawful assembly of a governmental body, and so we ask that you do follow the rules to make sure that this space is a safe space for everyone to speak, regardless of what they want to share with this body. If there is a disruption, then that will be addressed because that is a breach of the peace. So with that, I will open up the first opportunity for public comment, and again, this is specific to agenda items. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and be specific about what agenda item you're speaking to.
My name is Scott Acheson. I live in the 3rd Ward, and I'm speaking on committee of the whole number 3 about the downtown improvement district budget. But basically, I just want to start and say about the downtown improvement district budget, not to be confused with the Downtown Development Authority or Downtown Grand Rapids Inc. Put a little history lesson for you. This body created the Downtown Development Authority in 1979. You didn't start your clock yet.
Oh, that would be our city clerk. Thank you, Scott, for catching that.
Okay. But in 1979, this board started, created the Downtown Development Authority, and then in 2000, the Downtown Improvement District, and I believe in 2014, Downtown Grand Rapids Inc. And I'm telling you, a lot of good things are happening downtown, you know, with, it's very clean, and the beautification process is going on great. The new hotels are wonderful, a lot of new bars and restaurants are happening. We've got five museums downtown and a movie theater, and I still say 90% of the visitors here don't know we have a movie theater downtown. They just do not know. And with all that, you guys are getting like an A minus, B plus grade, but when it comes to information downtown, you guys get a D plus, C minus. It's a failing grade. You have no information system in place, nothing. And you guys are going to be voting on in the future in your budget. There's a new million-dollar-plus contract with the Ambassador Program for downtown. It's over a million dollars this year. Plus, there's 15 to 18 people that work in the Downtown Grand Rapids Inc. offices, and this is all taxpayer-assessment-funded projects, and you don't have an information system. I can't get that through, you know? But what I'm envisioning, I'm not, this is constructive criticism. I'm not going to complain unless I have a solution. You need to create an information system, all these QR codes. Somebody goes out and knocks on doors, find out what's open daily, restaurants, bars, museums, movie theater, and you have the best information that you scan the QR code, and it tells you what's open daily. And the address, phone number, and websites will be linked. You do it in Word and Excel, change it into a PDF, and then you can scan it. Put like a website, www.downtowngr.org/dailyinfo, or the scan will work. We're not talking rocket science, but when I look at all these budgets that you guys are authorizing, and we don't have an information system, you don't have an information center, that's why you're getting a D plus. You have nothing. And, you know, I'm going to go say this similar to the county. When I told this to the Convention and Arena Authority, city manager Mark Washington thought it was a great idea. But then we had a few other problems in this city, which I'm not going to talk about right now. But you need to refocus and get an information system in place, because, I don't know, somebody's got to motivate the Downtown Development Authority, Downtown Improvement District, and Downtown Grand Rapids Inc., but you are their boss. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else on agenda items?
Lucas, 1st Ward. It looks like you're about to pass a budget. Last time I was here, I issued a challenge, right to that camera, for the other side to get out from behind their keyboards and come speak their piece. A handful of them did last week. A gentleman from the chamber was thoughtful about the budget and taxes. Some just came to kowtow to you and kiss rings. One lady engaged in what I can only describe as submission gospel, blatantly accusing taxpayer, blatantly abusing the taxpayer-funded space that we're in for unconstitutional religious word vomit. I was kind of waiting for her to get into replacement theory and praise the Buffalo shooter while she was at it, since she clearly doesn't understand the true history of religion and policing as the actual roots of hate and violence, and how they're both given legitimization via themes like your budget.
Is that where you're speaking on tonight?
Yeah, I've mentioned it four times, I think. I can think of some dead kids in Texas today who'd love to have a word with her about violence right about now. Among the speakers in the actual majority here, I want to give a shout-out to a young lady from my son's own school, City High, who brilliantly took you on.
Hello.
She highlighted a lack of trust for GRPD, the huge reservations we have concerning how you govern and spend our money. But speaking of money, I got a question for all of you up there. Are you paid enough to sit here all night while people line up around the room? I mean, you're paid better than your peers in cities three times your size, but it's still not a lot, and I don't know that you're paid enough to reap the rewards that your weak, limp-wristed leadership is giving you, your endless spinelessness as you continue to refuse to kick these crooked police unions out of our city entirely and at least muster some resistance to their gangster methods.
Yep.
I would have thought you'd weigh some cost benefits since you have budgets on your mind. You should concern yourself with your own actions and how they directly cause us to come here and enlighten you to the connectivity that you can't seem to discover on your own between the ills in this city and your fiscal failures. Like I said last time, you made some good moves with pocket change, and that's nice to see, but you guys are playing catch-up, and we're begging you to do better.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close that public comment period, and that'll take us to approval of the minutes, commissioners. We have three minutes to approve tonight. We have the minutes from our May 10 special meeting, regular meeting, and then our special meeting on May 17th. Can I get a motion to approve all three of those?
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, that will take us to petitions and communications, and we have quite a few before us tonight.
The first one is a communication received from Scott Acheson, calling for the removal of Brian Harris as chair of the Downtown Grand Rapids Incorporated Board of Advisors.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Sam Cummings, expressing support for the proposed budget.
That's received and.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Received and filed.
Communication received from Nick Dubkowski regarding fiscal year 2023 city police budget.
That's received and filed.
Communication from Christopher Germain regarding their resignation from the City Planning Commission.
That is referred to our Committee on Appointments.
Communication from Michael LaMonaco regarding their resignation from the North Quarter Corridor Improvement Authority.
That is referred to our Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Lisa Oliver King regarding their resignation from the Urban Agricultural Committee.
That is referred to our Committee on Appointments.
Communication from Henry Pena regarding their resignation from the South Division Granville Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority.
That is also referred to our Committee on Appointments.
Communication from Rachel Postumas regarding their resignation from the North Quarter Corridor Improvement Authority.
That is referred again to our Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Paige Putin's urging the commission to listen to their constituents.
That's received and filed.
Communication from Ashima Segal regarding their resignation from the Housing Appeals Board.
That's referred to Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from a Georgia border regarding recent police violence.
That is received and filed.
Communication received, including nine questions regarding recent police violence.
That is received and filed.
Communication received regarding, communications regarding, or received regarding accountability to the Grand Rapids community and Patrick Leoya.
That's received and filed.
And communications received regarding justice for Patrick Leoya.
And that is received and filed. All right, next that will take us, please don't interrupt, that will take us reports of city officers.
First one is a Comptroller's report for the period of April 27, 2022, through May 10, 2022, in the amount of $15,878.98.
That is received and filed.
And the Treasurer's report for the period of April 23, 2022, through May 9, 2022.
And that is received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda are items that we discussed and voted on earlier today in one of our standing committee meetings, where there was a unanimous vote, so tonight with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Any additional questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have two ordinances before us tonight.
The first one is an ordinance amending section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2021-13 for fiscal year 2022, amendment number 11.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Moody from our fiscal committee, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. The ordinance amendment for this particular section is going to be looking at the Grand Rapids Mobile GR Department in reference to a reimbursement of revenue loss for the amount for repairs that need to be done, which is going to be around $1,917,511. Also, there is another one that deals with the fact of oversight and public accountability, where we were receiving a grant for $750,000 for two administrative analyst positions, which the Kellogg's Foundation has granted. Also, this amendment also deals with the Downtown Improvement District for the Monroe Center snow melt, the Fiscal Services Department appropriations for the Opera Fund Investments, and the last one is going to be the Fiscal Service Department for reimbursement for qualified expenses, which deals with the General Operating Fund and the Fire Department.
Great, thanks, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Assasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, and commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to our second ordinance to be adopted tonight.
And that is an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023 city budget.
All right, can I get a motion?
I'll move it.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Jones, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The item before us is our 2023 fiscal plan, which is, in essence, a continuation budget. It continues progress on our equity journey with over, with nearly $40 million in equity investments. Some of the primary focus areas are climate justice, climate adaptation, carbon reduction with the greening of infrastructure, electrification of vehicles, expansion of parks, and adding more emphasis with a new position for recycling education. In fact, over $200 million will be used to fund water production, water treatment, stormwater management, climate resilience, carbon reduction, parks and green spaces. I would like to note that there were some amendments that were made this morning by the commission to add funding in the following areas. There was an increase for the 3rd Ward Equity Fund up to $1 million. There was support of the African and Black Expo, as well as support for corridor economic recovery and public safety for the Creston neighborhood. This budget represents a significant investment in police oversight and cure of violence, mental health co-response for public safety, additional de-escalation training for officers that is community-informed and community-engaged, transfer for the oversight of the body-worn camera contract procurement and enforcement from police to the OPA. Funding is also included to engage the refugee and immigrant community, along with other key stakeholders, to improve community police relations. The city is also investing $700,000 for an enhanced mental health, public safety, co-response mobile crisis intervention team offered by Network 180, the city's Kent County Public Health Mental Health Authority partner. This will allow mental health and behavioral health clinicians to either co respond or lead the response for certain calls for service for which civilians are more trained to respond than law enforcement. Additionally, this maintains the $2 million budgeted for community participatory budgeting that includes allocations of $1 million for the 3rd Ward, $600,000 for the 2nd Ward, and $400,000 for the 1st Ward to fund investment that are recommended by the community. In fiscal year 2023, the city will invest nearly $30 million in housing and housing stability to include nearly $6 million identified for the Affordable Housing Fund. To close, I'd like to note some of the organizations also that will benefit from our neighborhood investment plan, which consists of dollars coming from the Community Development Block Grant, Home, ESG, and JAG. Some of those organizations include the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan, Family Outreach Center, Grand Rapids Urban League, Habitat for Humanity, Hispanic Center. Housing legal assistance will, funding will go to Legal Aid of West Michigan, Link Up, Steeple Town, as well as Salvation Army, Women's Resource Center, and Wellhouse. And so that is a quick overview of our budget.
Great, thanks, Commissioner. Commissioners, any additional questions or comments? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Assasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, commissioners, that will take us to our scheduled public hearings tonight. We do have four related to obsolete property rehabilitation districts and obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificates for properties located at 80970 Byron Commerce LLC, 974 Front Avenue Northwest, and 2017 Eastern Avenue Southeast. So what I'd like to do, commissioners, is have our Economic Development Director, Mr. Gracia, speak about both of these, and then we'll take all four of these together. So if anyone is here to be heard tonight on the obsolete property rehabilitation district or exemption facilities district, you are welcome to come forward, but we'll first allow Mr. Gracia an opportunity to tell us about these projects. We'll invite, I believe we have guests here tonight, so we'll invite them up to say a few words, see if you have any questions, and then I'll open it up for public comment.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and Manager. So the first is the public hearing to consider the obsolete property district and certificate for the project to be taking place at 974 Front Avenue Northwest. Again, it's a three-building complex that contains a one- and two-story structure, approximately 41,000 square feet. The redevelopment itself will create 35,000 square feet of office space in 12 residential units. Investment in the app, in the project is estimated to be $11.1 million. And the office space that will be created will be kind of hybrid and co-working business incubator space. The project qualifies for this 12-year Oprah based on the LEED certification goals and also installing a covered bus shelter in the corner of 10th Street and Scribner Avenue, approximate to the project itself. The applicant has also received a $30,000 facade improvement grant from the West Side Corridor Improvement Authority as well. So we'll move on to the second project, which is at 27 Eastern. So 27 Eastern is a rehabilitation of a vacant portion of the building that currently houses the post office and will result in the creation of 16 affordable housing units, and that's 60 to 80% area median income. The building will also have energy efficiency standards known as passive house, which will include all-electric and rooftop solar installations, and total cost for this project is estimated at $2.9 million. The project aligns with the South Town Business Area Specific Plan and also is included in the Seymour Square Priority Investment Area. So again, the applicant also received local support from the South Town Corridor Improvement Authority from a $10,000 facade improvement grant. So I'd like to invite representatives from the construction group, so Matt Dixon, who's an architect, and Emily Petz, who's a development specialist with the group, to answer questions. Matt will speak specifically about 974 Front, and Emily will speak on 27 Eastern.
Great, thanks. Welcome, Mr. Dixon.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Matt Dixon. I'm a resident of the 3rd Ward, and I'm the Director of Architecture at Pinnacle Construction Group. So we're very excited about the 974 Front project. It's an abandoned industrial complex. Originally was nine buildings back when it was built in the 1914 to 1921 range. That's since been kind of redeveloped and parcelled out until it's three standing buildings at this point, and we are hoping to, as they said, redevelop it for 35,000 square feet of office, 12, 12 housing units between the 60 and 80% AMI level. We are applying for historic tax credits from the State Historic Preservation Office, as well as the RAP grants that I'm sure you're all very aware of. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We're very excited about this, hoping that it can be a catalyst to revitalize that area of the west side of the river.
Great, thanks. Commissioners, any questions? All right, thank you. Thanks for being here. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. So my name is Emily Petz. I was born in Grand Rapids, and I'm here to talk about 2017 Eastern Avenue, which is a two-story masonry building on the corner of Burton and Eastern. So we'll be specifically, we were, the post office will remain on the front of the building, and we'll be focusing on creating 16 units towards the vacant back half of the building. Those units will be studio, one-bedroom, and live-work spaces on the main floor. We will be targeting 60 to 80% of the area median income for this project. The building is classified as functionally obsolete and has been vacant for at least five years. We will be going above code in a few different ways to make sure that the building is highly energy efficient, so this building is working to reach net zero, and it'll get through, get to that point by high insulation values along the wall and windows, adding solar to the roof, and then state-of-the-art energy systems with heat pumps to further decrease the energy use. It will be an all-electric building as well. We will also be adding amenities to make sure that anyone with any accessibility can access the unit, so we will have an elevator and making sure the doors and handles and light switches and things like that are appropriate for any ability. Yeah, so we're very excited and appreciate the facade support from the South Town CIA, and we look forward to, any questions you may have, I'd be happy to answer.
Great, thanks. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, thank you. So if you are here tonight to be heard on the obsolete property rehabilitation district or the obsolete property exemption certificate for either of these properties, now's an opportunity to come forward. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and provide input on this request.
My name is Donnie, and I live in the 3rd Ward. I'm going to do, I'm going to start with my initial vote on said proposal. It's going to be a nay, and I'm going to explain why. It's a nay for me because, again, we're talking about restoring a building that's going to not acknowledge and/or take a direct step forward to any of the problems that we have here in Grand Rapids, meaning people who pay taxes, people who live here and want resources, need resources in order to maintain here. But the problem is that gentrification here is spoke and uplifted rather than, rather than catered to, because again, we have these, you know, developers come up here and they get more than three minutes to be able to explain to you what they want to do instead of working for it, like we have to come up here and taxpayer dollars to tell you in three minutes why I have to vote nay on a situation. You know what I'm saying? So to further explain my nay, we need more resources in mental health. I'm talking about like serious reallocation of funds. I'm talking about like not, something more than like $200,000 to $300,000. I'm talking about like throw some real money at it, you know what I'm saying? Mental health, throw some real money at affordable housing. You're saying that you're developing all these nice buildings and stuff like that, but really it's delaying the process of people to fight against gentrification, because it gives them no right to stand on when they don't own anything, right? So, okay, how about we, how about we reallocate more money into affordable housing so people can actually decide to live here and actually maintain their financial, their finances, right? How about we reallocate more money into, into the better water process, because you're telling us that you're trying to fix the water situation, but yet we have, this past month, we had like things on our phones, codes on our phones telling us to boil water advisory. Come on now, like come with it, or don't come with it at all, you know what I'm saying? What you're doing is you're giving silent whispers to a situation rather than actually helping the situation, because guess what? How many, how many wards make up Grand Rapids, okay? So how much, how much do you think out of $300,000 are you going to be able, or how many of those pipes are you going to be able to replace? Like one, two, maybe like a block and a half, you know? So again, throw some real money at those reallocations and not just give us silent whispers and sweet nothings, okay? Defund GRPD, reallocate more money to the southeast side, as you should, rather than gentrifying everywhere and kicking people out. Thank you. Justice for Patrick Leoya.
Others who wish to be heard on this obsolete property rehabilitation district and exemption certificate.
Hello, my name is Emma. I would have liked to have spoken on action items earlier, but there was some foolishness with the GRPD, which made it so several people were unable to come here today and speak. But I will speak on this. Again, I echo what my fellow brilliant citizen said about the fact that this city seems to really value property over people.
Let her speak.
The fact that we're using the term rehabilitation, which typically we use in healthcare, and we're applying that to property also is indicative of that as well. The fact that the four public hearings for tonight all have to do with only property is concerning as well. Now, I do understand that property does affect people, and had I heard in the plans of all these properties, some really explicit ways to help the people, I may have said something different when I came up here. Some actual affordable housing, 60% to 80% of the median income is not affordable at all, especially when you take into account the wealth gap, which puts that median income further towards the wealthy than it does towards those who can't afford it. That, to me, does not say affordable housing. Again, echoing my fellow citizen, we should be putting money into mental health, into healthcare, into temporary housing for places like Da Geje and Mel Trotters, of which, when you walk down the street on Division, there's those signs, and it says about five or six shelters. Of those five or six shelters, each shelter is delineated for just one specific group of people, so meaning there's only one shelter, one or two shelters in the entire city for all unhoused women, one or two shelters in the entire city for all unhoused children, and so on. That is patently unacceptable, given that you think how big one shelter is, maybe 50, 60, if it's a big shelter, 100, couple hundred people, when homelessness is a huge issue in this city. And I just, I can't accept that, and also that none of these action items, or I'm sorry, public hearing items had to do with justice or police. I don't want to use the word reform, and I know that the word abolish scares you, but some serious change.
All right, thank you. Thanks. All right, others who wish to be heard on these obsolete property rehabilitation district requests.
Hi, I'm Mark, and I'm from Grand Rapids. I want to talk about specifically the property. I want to talk about specifically the property, the soon-to-be rehabilitated property on Burton, you know, where the post office is hooked to. Someone said affordable housing. 60% to 80% AMI? Was this some kind of sick joke? That's not affordable, that's market rate. Nobody can afford market rate. What, you want to be like Seattle? Where they have tents all over the place? I mean, there's so many homeless tents in Seattle, it's stretched all the way out to the Mariners Bowl Park and the Seahawk Stadium. You want to be like that? Because I guarantee you, none of y'all can afford a home in Seattle worth $850,000 bucks You better think about this, because that's what's gonna happen here. And here in Michigan, it is twice as cold as up in Washington State. The AMI should be lowered so people can really afford it. Because if not, this is nothing but profit, profit for the private people. And you're kicking people who can't afford a shanty outside of the city limits. And then that could cause more chaos. Because out there, you got a lot of hate groups that are gonna be zeroing in, and they're gonna kill. You want that to happen? Let's go fall to defeat on every one of you. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, others who wish to be heard on this obsolete property rehabilitation district?
So yeah, I'm just here to echo what my fellow citizens have said. I just, I actually don't know if you all know what's happening with rent prices in this city, because our agenda items, we talk about affordable housing, but we never hear from our officials, y'all say, "The working class is being displaced from Grand Rapids right now." Houses like they're proposing that they cannot afford, that's gonna go to people coming into town from other places, from other higher-income cities. Then they're gonna come in, sweep up that housing. Our people who have lived here for generations, low-income working-class people, are getting displaced to Kentwood, they're getting displaced to Wyoming. These are my friends and neighbors, and I would really love it if you would institute some rent caps. Like, we should not have landlords that can raise rent $500 from year to year, and that is what's happening out here. That's just one example, but that's like 250, 500, 300. Where raises, what are raises in this city? Nonexistent. My family's making the same income we made 10 years ago. My house value has gone up 100%. So how can anybody in my income bracket that my family's always occupied in this city still afford to live here? It's really, again, we're talking about housing. Do y'all know what crisis housing is? Crisis housing is not affordable housing. Crisis housing is for the people that are already on the streets because they've already been displaced by the lack of affordable housing. So what this city doesn't, we do not need affordable housing right now, we need crisis housing. We need to be taking people that are on the streets. Every night, you can go down Monroe Center, and you can pick every single business alcove, and you can see who's taking it for that night. That's someone's house, that's someone's apartment because it has a roof. Those people need to be in a place. If we got a space on Burton and Division or Eastern or wherever it was, I think that's a great place for crisis housing. And again, we had the gentleman, you were talking about Seattle, right? And the difference between here and Seattle, but actually, if you look at the population size of Grand Rapids, our unhoused population has exploded compared to Seattle. For the size of our city, our unhoused population is only down to dysfunction. So maybe y'all don't see them because we push them to the river, to Kent Trails, they have to hide, but if you drive along the highway, if you look in the woods, you'll see the tents, you'll find them. Those are our neighbors that no longer can afford to live in our city. So I would love everyone up here to do something about that. I don't want to hear any more rehabilitated, like, places that are going to be charging $1,500 a month for rent, when people can't even afford $500 for rent right now that have lived here their whole lives. I do not care about transplants coming in here. I mean, I do, I want everyone to love Grand Rapids and enjoy it here, but I want us to be taking care of the people that have always been here as well.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hello, Adrian Moll with the First Ward of Grand Rapids. I am totally against the building of Front Street and the other one. I'm a landlord, and my family is a landlord. We can't afford that much of taxes, especially when we know the taxes are not going for roads, simple stuff like that. It is hard to amaze the people like you are getting a lot of income for the taxes, and you don't care much about the roads and the people, the stuff that normal people have to deal with. The roads, city lights. We don't have much problem with the city lights, but small things like that. I am mostly wanting less taxes. Less rent would be okay, but if there is too much expense for taxes for the housing, the rents, the income has to go up for us landlords or other people. And I am handicapped from my right side, so I understand what the dis buildement of and the alit fagers are. When I saw the income for the new housing, that is a lot of money for me and people that have progressive income. And $11 million is a lot for one citizen that pays taxes. Hopefully you would get what I'm talking about. $11,000 is a lot of money. I know the builders that we're talking is making a lot of money from that. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Again, this is the scheduled public hearing for the obsolete property rehabilitation district, so if you want to speak on that item, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Shannon Tanis, and I'm not really sure what ward I live in, but I live between Oaks and Cherry, Division area. And I also do oversight for government accountability, and I've engaged you people for over the past two and a half years. And for property companies to be coming up here asking for tax-free certificates is kind of ridiculous when we don't even vet the agencies or the corporations to make sure that they know how to administrate these attachments, okay? I have been oversighting the homeless system. The current PHAs and HARAs do not even know how to run the system. They're not even using the HMIS system, they're using their own individual systems. They are denying people referrals, or they are picking and choosing, selectiveness, not to mention, there is foreclosure fraud being done in this county. I was a property homeowner at 3791 Canal Avenue in Granville, Michigan. I served lawful notification upon Kent County Sheriff's, the courthouse here locally, the Attorney General, my legislator, that I was a first-time homebuyer. Yes, those community grants, these things are all, you know, equitable interest and government interest are, you know, what this company is asking for. And that it was unlawful per MCL 600.3201 to be doing a power sale foreclosure on these types of home loans, mischda loans, okay? I've done everything with representatives, tried to get answers on this. I've been denied by the city attorney to address this or anybody else. So now I'm tired of asking, I'm tired of hearing the people ask for you to do your fiduciary responsibility. So this is what this is called, it's called color of law, and these are civil rights violations, and there is no qualified immunity when you do these types of violations. They are a breach of trust, and we are going to file federally against all of you, okay, to hold you responsible, because the ignorance of law is no excuse, okay? So I advise you to engage properly if you do not want a federal filing, but if you continue to acquiesce, then I have no other choice, since no attorney that has special interest in public agenda will tell you that there is no qualified immunity in these regards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna take just a couple more comments and then close this public hearing.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh, Lucas is up here without the iPad, he's about to go off script again. So you're talking about giving rich people free stuff from the taxpayers to do things that rich people should be able to cough up on their own, and I always find myself asking this question. I'm currently working with a freelance client, and they've already paid, so you can call and harass them and try to get them to fire me, but I've already got their money, so don't try it. But they're having me cheat the demographics for a property in Nashville that's 15 miles outside downtown so they can make it look better, because they don't like where it is. That's the kind of ethics that developers use when they're on corporate welfare. And I don't get greed. I don't understand greed. I understand gluttony. I'm a chunky guy, I get it. I don't understand greed. Greed is hoarding. Greed is sitting on stuff you don't need, nobody else needs. You're just sitting on it because you can. And somebody addressed the wage gap. I make New England money. My partner makes Nashville money. If I got a job that I have here in Grand Rapids, I take a pay cut. Our incomes are figured into the averages that are claimed when she says 60% to 80%. That's not accurate. It's real hard to be a transplant. I'm not picking on the person that said transplant, I'm glad to be a transplant, but it's real hard to show up here and watch you working on the same dumb BS that I left Nashville to get away from. It's real hard. It's real hard to be proud to have a lady mayor again, because I'm still mad my lady mayor got ousted in Nashville. It really pisses me off to see a small body of very manageable government that's paid better than the one I came from, that should be able to do better, sitting here and loving on greed, leg-humping on greed, just slurping up the greed. And why? Because you think you couldn't go out here and get all these people that are truth-tellers to vote for you if you voted and acted toward the truth? Because if you don't do it, somebody else is going to. I've been to that post office on Eastern, I agree, it needs some work, but it doesn't need you to hand them more corporate welfare. Their CEOs likely would never notice if they had to pay for it themselves. That's why these people are angry, and it really sucks to be having to spend time on this in a city I was so proud and so bragging back home that I relocated to to come home from my better half who's from Michigan. It was my turn to do 20 years in her home, and now I can't just kick back and be glad I'm here, because you've got all this foolishness going on. You got the Grand Rapids PD, I'm hearing some real nasty stuff right about now, but you got the Grand Rapids PD down the street targeting known activists.
I didn't speak, please go.
Targeting known activists to slow them down getting here. That is trash, and that's what I hope this guy back here can help you reform, but Mark, you're their boss, and you've got some butts to kick.
Thank you, your time's up. All right, I'm gonna take one more comment related to this obsolete property rehabilitation district, and then we're gonna move to the appeal for Uptown. No, I can close a public hearing anytime I want. Go ahead, are you gonna speak?
General public comment?
This is not general public comment, DeAndre. It's not. It's about an obsolete property rehabilitation district. Okay, I'm gonna, anyone else? Are you speaking on the obsolete property rehabilitation district? Okay, okay, thanks.
I just want to say that I'm a mom of four. I've been living in my building for three years now. I'm being forced out because my building was bought by a company. They want to raise my rent from $1,100 to $1,600. I don't think it's fair, and when you say 80% to 60%, who are you factoring in that? Because the lower-class people are, you know, struggling, and we do need more, better affordable housing and caps. You're gonna give them a break, but we're not getting a break. I'm working three jobs. My 18-year-old is working a job. We need the breaks where the breaks should go. They have money. They all look like they have money. I just feel like, look into the community and see, they're gonna get this cut, and then they're gonna be like, your credit score has to be 800. You have to, if you want to qualify for low income, it's gonna be 1,200. We're dealing with a lot of private investors that came to Grand Rapids, and I don't think it's fair. We've lived here, I was born here, I'm on the northeast side of Grand Rapids, and I'm being pushed out, and I'm having to relocate with me and my four kids, and having to pay $1,800 in rent to live somewhere decent on the northeast side is sick. And where are these jobs that are gonna help me pay $1,800 a month? Because you have to make three times, and then your credit has to be 680, and you can't have a pass hiccup. And then they take your application fee and say, oh, we denied you for this, or you had this happen 10 years ago. So I don't think they need the money. Put it somewhere else. Put it in a veterans' union or something, put it in a low-income or, and then those, put it in a homeowner thing so they can update their houses that they're asking for all this money for, when you don't even get a dishwasher, and it's rats, and it's roaches, and it's dirty. So there needs to be some type of cap, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna close that public hearing, and that's gonna take us to our next public hearing. So our next public hearing is a City Commission public hearing to hear appeals, to hear appeals. Andrea, if you keep yelling, I'm gonna ask you to leave because that is disruptive. So, sir, are you okay? Are you okay? Okay, so I'm gonna open up this next public hearing, and this is a public hearing specific to the Uptown Business Improvement District Special Assessment. So when there is an appeal, this body, the full City Commission, sits as a board of review to hear appeals on the 2022 Uptown Business Improvement District Special Assessment Rule 8766. So I believe Paula is here? Oh, sorry. So we'll hear from our assessor's office, and then if you own property in this appeals district, in this assessment district, and you want to appeal your assessment, I'll give you an opportunity to come up momentarily, and then the assessor's office will follow up with you immediately. So again, different for this public hearing, this scheduled public hearing, this is for individuals who are being assessed, so they have to own property in this assessment district. So when you come up, we'll ask you to share your name, your property address of the assessment, and then you can share your appeal concerns with us. So go ahead.
Lindsay Pauls, the Deputy City Assessor.
Oh, can you make sure your microphone is on?
Is that better?
Yeah.
The Deputy City Assessor. At the request of the Uptown Business Improvement District, the assessor's office has prepared the Special Assessment Rule Number 8766 in accordance with the Business Improvement District's plan adopted on March 29, 2022. Property owners were sent notices on April 14 and notified of the charge and the appeal process. The Special Assessment Rule has been open for public inspection for at least two weeks, starting on May 2 through today. The assessment rule has been available online as well. The assessment rule has been available online as well. The assessor's office has received one appeal as of today's date. Tonight, the City Commission will convene as the board of review to hear appeals of these assessments, and tonight is the final opportunity for those notified to file an appeal of this assessment. I will be available in room 921 to assist any of those who wish to file an appeal. The city assessor and attorney will review the appeals and report to the commission on June 21, requesting confirmation of the assessment rule. If confirmed, this assessment will be invoiced on July 1 with the summer property tax.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. And for individuals not familiar with where you'll be, it's out the hall to the...
Just out the hall.
To the left?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. So if you are a property owner and part of this assessment role, and you want to be heard for an appeal, now's an opportunity to come forward. Is there anyone here from Uptown? Okay, seen none. We'll close that opportunity for appeal. You can still appeal in writing, so please do that if you wish to file an appeal on that assessment rule. Commissioners, that will take us to our resolutions to be adopted tonight. I'm wondering if I can just do one suspend-the-rules motion to consider all five. City Attorney, is that all right? One motion to... Okay. So can I get a motion to suspend the rules to consider five resolutions?
Support.
All right. Moved and supported to suspend the rules. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, rules are suspended, and that will take us to our five resolutions tonight.
The first one is a resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for 8970 Byron Commerce LLC at 974 Front Avenue Northwest.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right. Moved and supported. Commissioners, any additional questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, that will take us to our second resolution.
Resolution approving a 12-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for 8970 Byron Commerce LLC at 974 Front Avenue Northwest, Southeast.
All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right. Any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. Take us to our third resolution.
A resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for... For... Sorry. Apostate Properties LLC at 2017 Eastern Avenue, Southeast.
All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right. Moved and supported. Commissioners, any additional questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, that will take us to our fourth resolution.
Resolution approving a 12-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for Apostate Properties LLC at 2017 Eastern Avenue, Southeast.
All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right. Moved and supported. Commissioners, any additional questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. Next, that will take us to our fifth resolution.
A City Commission Resolution approving settlement in the PNC Bank, 5601 28th Street Risk Management Claim Number 22-R0123.
All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Report.
All right. Moved and supported. And again, commissioners, this is for a sewer backup and damages related to that sewer backup. Any additional questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight. Again, we ask that you come forward, that you share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak.
My name is John Williamson. I've lived in Grand Rapids for 19 years. I went to Calvin College where I studied communications. I have a master's degree in counselor education from Western Michigan University. I'm trained in nonviolent communication. I am a passionate pacifist. Under no circumstances would I raise a gun to shoot another man. Under no circumstances would I wrestle a man to the ground and tase him. I don't understand. Best I can tell, Rosalynn Bliss would have pulled the trigger herself. Best I can tell, Rosalynn Bliss loves having the blood of Patrick Leoya on her hands.
Let him speak.
Mayor Bliss, best I can tell, you don't know who Emmett Till is, you don't know who George Floyd is, you don't know who Breonna Taylor is. I don't see you marching with his name because we march every day for Patrick Leoya, and I don't see y'all. So seems to me y'all are marching in the name of Christopher Scher, Christopher Scher, all of y'all, with his blood on his hands. Far as I can tell, you would have pulled the trigger yourself because his plate wasn't right. Far as I can tell, you stand opposed to Dr. King. Far as I can tell, you stand opposed to peace. This movement that marches in the name of Patrick Leoya or in the name of whichever man I have heard has been killed by the police today in Grand Rapids, I have heard today another killing of the police of a black man in Grand Rapids. I have heard, I pray it's not true, but I would not be the least bit surprised. I didn't want to say another name. That was to be the last name. Patrick Leoya was to be the last name I ever forgot.
Justice for Patrick.
Justice for Patrick. Would you please leave these people alone? These are your citizens. These are their voices. Why must you silence? Why must you tone police? You are silencing Dr. King's spirit. Every time you silence these people, you are silencing Dr. King, Rosalynn Bliss, and I will run for mayor against you, and I will devastatingly destroy you if there is anything like a city left over after the anarchy you may unleash with the cruelty you continue to add to the most desperate in your community. I walk around downtown giving out water bottles. You know how much $80,000 a year could do to feed the people without homes in this city? I am so sick of these conversations with these ideas you get from rich white men about how we're going to fix the city, about how the market is going to raise all ships. It is leaving more and more out of the cold. Homelessness has exploded under Mayor Rosalynn Bliss, who only got elected because a guy named Bliss made a fucking waterslide.
Sir, stop.
Excuse me? Why? What is it? I have 14 seconds. I'm missing... Well, you can't say an F-word. If you march with Dr. King's spirit, you can't say an F-word to Rosalynn Bliss, who will never be elected again, who has silenced even now the voices most desperate to be heard. You are marching even now against Patrick Leoya, and I am ashamed of all of you.
Thank you.
Justice for Patrick Leoya.
All right. Others who wish to be heard?
I know why I didn't want to go next because you didn't want to follow the man. All right, Lucas, first ward. You know me. I'm tired of introducing myself, but in case you somehow just got here. Last week, during your special meeting, somebody really nailed it when they said, "A few of you are nice. None of you are brave." That's one of the most effective summaries I've heard concerning this body. I think that's my biggest gripe, even with the ones of you that I like. Just imagine how different things would be if you were brave enough to pass resolutions condemning police violence and pledging to make change. Imagine if Commissioner Lanier, after so much deafening, sold-out silence, had more to say than petty shots taken at the standing protesters in the room. Imagine if Commissioner O'Connor didn't always have the least to say on police issues, or most other topics for that matter, and he's conveniently absent tonight, which kills me because he's the thrust of this set of remarks. In my own ward, my two commissioners embody the nice versus brave concept very well. When I first started addressing failures in traffic safety on my street, Commissioner Repert nicely joined me for a two-hour porch summit observing the problem firsthand. Commissioner O'Connor, wherever you are, bro. Commissioner O'Connor, after weeks of raising hell, managed to muster a few minutes standing on the corner, most of which was colored by his lack of bravery, to stand up to GRPD and demand that they actually engage in service. While I don't consider the recent attention O'Connor and others have received to be true vandalism as spun by our pathetic excuses for journalists in this city, I do wonder how a little bravery would have helped prevent such desperate messaging from these people.
They're not listening.
However, since so many of the powerful in this city seem to only think about money, perhaps a protest in public spaces like the ones around Mr. O'Connor's business would be more effective than carefully-laid bricks and paint stencils. Long Road Distillers on Leonard. "Don't buy booze from a bootlicker" sounds like a fantastic protest phrase to me. But none of this has to be this way. If those of you who are nice would just learn how to be brave. If those of you who think you're nice would learn that West Michigan nice is a toxic lie. And if those of you that aren't nice would just have the guts to speak your true feelings, O'Connor, instead of hiding in silence, you know, like that one time the Commissioner Moody did that on video for all of us. Instead, you keep lying and placating to insulate your political ladder climbing. You've got a lot to figure out and not that many election cycles to do it.
All right. Before we... Oh, I'm sorry. Before we go to the next individual, a city manager just wants to clarify something to make sure that there's not confusion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to respond to the information I heard earlier about a possible shooting that was officer-involved, and I have confirmed with the police chief that that is not the case. There is a shooting incident, but it is between two non-police civilians.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Yeah, so let's talk about that police shooting then, yeah? Or that, the incident that was brought up tonight? The fact that a man was laying on the ground untreated for 15 minutes while GRPD police cruisers blocked an ambulance from getting through? Shall we talk about that?
Yes.
Shall we talk about the fact that protesters are still being silenced by the city? Let's talk about the fact that protesters were arrested on the way to this meeting so they are unable to speak to you all tonight. I know that you don't want to hear what we have to say. I see all of your miserable faces. Well, guess what? You should be fucking miserable. Your fault.
No profanity.
Your fault that Patrick Leoya was murdered. It is your fault that Patrick Leoya was murdered.
Justice for Patrick.
And you are continuing to silence activists. I'm really proud of you, Bliss, for turning off my megaphone because you know who else you turned it off on? Not the white folks, it's the black folks. Want to go through those videos and see how many people you prevented from speaking from women? It's the black folks, not the white folks. Patrick Leoya was murdered by GRPD.
Justice for Patrick.
Do you see how she feels? Do you think she gives a rat's ass?
No.
If you care about justice in this city, you would do something about it, not build new fucking buildings.
Okay. Your time's up. Your time's up. Your time's up. Nope, I gave you a warning, and your time is up. The rules are very clear. The rules are very clear. The rules... Your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up.
The people of this city are not like you.
Your time is up. I'm going to ask you to leave, or I will have somebody escort you out.
The people of this city are poor. The people of this city are poor.
Your time is up. Your time is up.
The people of this city are hungry.
Your time is up.
The people of this city have words to say, and you are the judge.
Your time's up.
Tone policing is not helping in this obsolete... Justice for Patrick Leoya.
All right. Others who wish to be heard?
Supreme Court has ruled that promanity is protected.
That's true.
Go ahead.
Hello, fellow Michiganders. I'm a regular taxpayer and citizen. Our people want answers and accountability. We need answers, not just for the past, but for the present. We would change. What would change? The police department is supposed to protect and serve, supposed to reinsure, supposed to make sure the community is safe. What are they doing? How are they going about it? We have no answers. The community is lost. How do you get pulled over for looking suspicious? What is suspicious? Were you not living in our community? Were you not active in our community? So what do we do at that point? It should be something where it should be mandated, where they should do community service. I don't believe that they should get defunded, but it should be something to be done. Our community is at a uproar right now. Like, you don't want to see our back against the wall. We have no choice but to fight. We not want to fight, even the people who go to work every day. So what do we do? We ask y'all to what do we do? Have you seen somebody gunned down? Have you seen somebody on Zing or your doorbell get gunned down? Do kids want to grow to be police officers now? Like, come on now. Everybody in this chair sitting in front of us, y'all put hard work and dedication. What if somebody killed y'all before y'all became who y'all was? Somebody got to make a difference. Somebody got to stand up. We got a new chief in town. Somebody got to make a difference. So who going to do it? We only got a voice. Y'all in a position and power to help out our community, and that's all we asking.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right. Others who wish to be heard?
My name's Kieran, second ward. I wanted to speak earlier before y'all voted on the resolutions about the obsolete property rehabilitation districts. I don't appreciate that I wasn't able to speak on that because I wanted to point out that y'all are approving the maximum length of time for these exemption certificates, 12 years. So for 12 years, these property owners are not going to pay the full property taxes. How long does it take for them to develop a building and then charge us extra rent to live there while they get to cut their taxes? So I just want to say, you know, screw you for that. Also, last week was really nice. We were all able to speak. Some of us dropped F-bombs, but we just kept talking, and there was no who-blah, so we actually got through the whole line. Take note. Saying one swear word is not going to kill democracy or your proceedings here. It's how real people speak. Not all of us are educated and privileged enough to have 1,000 different words that all mean the same thing. Sometimes what we have is a four-letter word that starts with F because we're angry and we're upset, and we come back and we ask you for things. And I wanted to ask you for something, but you didn't let me speak tonight. I just... It's so sad. Like, I know they say like they're going to be fucking accessible. Oops, I'm sorry. That was on accident. Like I said, I talk like that in my daily work life. I'm a professional human being, and I drop an F-bomb every once in a while. It's just in green, okay?
The rules are very clear.
Oh, my God!
Sir, please don't disrupt.
They're disrupting.
Go ahead.
Do not watch Commissioner Jones in your absence, and you'll learn how to run a meeting. Correct!
Yeah, it was well done. But yeah, I just want to say I do not appreciate the job you're doing, Rosalynn. I don't appreciate the way you run these meetings or listen to your community. community. I don't appreciate the way that a bunch of black mothers were arrested today and their voices were silenced in this meeting. I don't like the way we're being targeted for asking for what we deserve and what we want and just to be treated humanely. Justice for Patrick Leoya. Defund GRPD to the minimum 32%. We ask that Chris Becker be taken off of the Christopher Scher murder case. We ask that Christopher Scher be arrested and charged with Patrick Leoya's murder. We request that police have to get their own liability insurance. And, oh, what's that other one? Abolish qualified immunity. So that's what I have to say today. Sorry, I said the F-word. It happens all the time. Fuck you.
All right, others who wish to be heard?
Defund GRPD.
Okay.
Hi, sorry, I had to sanitize. So my name's Jose. I am glad to be able to speak up here today. I wasn't able to come to the last meeting and then unfortunately, you know, you all recessed the meetings and then dipped out of here pretty quick. So thank you for your time today. So first thing, justice for Patrick Leoya. Second thing, I, so I actually used to be on the civilians' appeals board years ago. I quickly got out of there because I realized that it was just for show. So in the first, in the first case that we had, you know, it was, it was a police officer going into a private residence chasing someone that had committed, I don't even know what it was, but they went into a private residence that they shouldn't have gone into. And, and the thing that was asked was, was this, was this following policy? And the thing is, following policy isn't always the moral or ethical, ethically correct thing to do. And I know Brandon Davis was talking about the reimagine, the, you know, civilian appeals board initiative. I think if we're going to reimagine what CAB is, we need to, we need to let them be able to change policy because policy doesn't always equate to, to, to ethically or morally correct. And secondly, CAB should have subpoena powers. I don't think that the people have enough power. I think that, again, as I mentioned, I quickly left CAB because it was, it was all a show. It was all a ruse, and I think the City of Grand Rapids is good at doing that. And so I want to say, we need to give more power to the people. We need to be, have GRPD be accountable because right now, they're not held accountable. Right now, they think that they can bully, they think that they can harass and, and threaten and, and hurt the, the community that they serve, and it's, it's a shame. None of us in our professional lives could get away with what the GRPD gets away with every single day. And actually, so, so the last time I was here, I, oh no, did I lose it? Where is it at? Anyways, I had a, I had a validation ticket, right? I don't even know what officer it was. I have to look back on, on my phone. But simply asking to get this validated got me threatened with, with arrest. Like, what the hell is that? What does that make sense for? I'm, I'm a citizen here. I pay my taxes. I do my due diligence. I'm asking for a simple validation and I shouldn't get threatened with arrest? And, and police are escalating things far beyond what they need to be escalated for? It's not even about de-escalation. It's not escalating, escalating it in the first place. So GRPD needs, I mean, first of all, I, I want them to be abolished, but if we're going to keep them around, train them right.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name's Alexis. I usually like to be a little prepared before I come up and do this kind of thing because honestly, I, when I get angry, I swear a lot and Mayor Bliss, you don't like that, which, whatever. Honestly, I'm sure you say it at home. But that is completely beside the point because I want to emphasize what a disappointment you are. When you were elected, I was a political science student at Grand Valley. I was thrilled to see a woman mayor because that was something that I felt that I could aspire to be. I would rather die than be what you are. Like honestly, I'm not even saying that as a joke. You are disgusting that you can sit up here and look at me with so much condescension is gross. And that you can sit here and talk to these people and pretend that you, you are listening in any capacity is gross. You might as well not show up to these meetings because yeah, Joseph Jones did a better job than you. Probably any of these people could do a better job than you and everybody in this room. And I cannot even tell you that, like, I, I honestly don't have words because, oh man. All right, justice for Patrick Leoya. If you don't get justice for Patrick Leoya, honestly, I would expect your city to burn down because I'm done with this. I'm done with you. I'm not going to pretend that I care about your opinion. I'm not going to pretend I care about any, anybody here's opinion. I think that you all should fuck off.
Okay, all right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, I'm Andrea from Grand Rapids. A while back, I was on YouTube and was researching how other city councils operated. So some of them will have public comment recorded in the minutes and then at the following meeting, they will spend the first 10 to 20 minutes answering questions or providing feedback from the comments from the previous meeting. So that way, there is community engagement, but nothing ever gets addressed through this body. Every issue gets swept under the rug until said issue comes to fruition and then you make another resolution and make more broken promises. And it's just this repeated broken cycle. I'd really like to see more effort for community engagement and involvement because when you don't allow that, as you've all done for quite some time, the community doesn't trust you. You could work with the community instead of against it, but instead, you have an us versus them mentality. But it's not a you versus us because it's all of us in this room that put you in your chair. Without the working-class citizens of this city, you'd have nothing. So when we go out and protest and disrupt that capitalism, you need to pay attention to that because we have the power to shut this whole city down. We don't have enough people and numbers yet, but we'll get there. And you know why we'll get there? Because you all are too arrogant to not push us there. I suggest that you stop maintaining the status quo and start building a relationship with your constituents because you don't want your entire city to stop spending their money here. If we could somehow take down the devotes, the police unions, and talk sense into all the bootlickers, we could shut this city down. Unfortunately, we have a lot of clowns standing in our way. Don't be a clown. Grow a spine, grow a pair, whatever. Stand up for what's right. Be progressive. Mayor Bliss, you ran on being progressive. What are you doing? I'd like to see one source where we can find information on the entire process. It's our right to know what's going on politically in our city because it affects each and every one of us and we pay the taxes. The last thing I want to say is the tone policing is not a good look for the City of Grand Rapids. People are starting to wake up and see, people are really seeing your prejudice and your biases when you pick and choose who must follow the rules and who you'll let slide. Arrest Christopher Scher. Justice for Patrick. Justice for all black lives. Power to the motherfucking people.
Thank you. Your time's up. Your time's up. Your time's up.
I'm Casey Thompson, Third Ward. You all already know. So I had this idea, right, that I could go and buy this like blazer and this really fancy business suit and I could get up here and say things like reallocate funds instead of defund the police and stuff like that. I wanted to like, you know, get a lot of hairspray like you, Mayor Bliss, and just like see if then you could maybe hear me. Maybe if I spoke your language and like put it pretty, then you could hear me, right? But I got to looking at the suits. They were stiff. They were dry. They looked uncomfortable, a lot like all of you, and I just didn't want to be that. And at the end of the day, this is what community looks like. This, this, this is what it sounds like. This is what your community looks like, with a little sprinkle of rich folk and a couple Saras in the back. But mostly, it's this. So I'll present it as it is. And then I'll continue to do that each and every time. And then you guys can continue to sit and look at me like, you know, she came with the sledge, they dropped the F-bomb, you know, let's get through these two, three minutes and then two weeks from now, we'll do it again and here comes these people again. Nope, this is what community looks like. This is your community. This is it. So I'm not going to paint a pretty picture. I'm not going to say it in a way that fits into the policy standard. I'm not going to come up here with business forum because that's not what your community looks like. That's what the community that you cater to looks like, and it's only this big. It's only this big. So what about everybody else? What about us? Because you sit here and you look at us and you smile and you nod and the three minutes end and then you say, all right, all in favor say aye, all in favor say nay, and you give the people tax-free credit. You really just look at us to just get through this time. And this is what your community looks like. I'm so glad that terms are temporary. Terms are temporary. And I just wish that at the end of the day, you could humble yourselves enough to see that we're the same. Anita, I could have done your crochet so much better. Like, it starts back so far, like, we're all average. We're all just average. You're not better. You're not. And when you were blowing kissy faces at me and stuff after I said your daughter is a pedophile last week, like, but you made sure that part didn't show on the live. It's just insulting. Your attitude is insulting. Your, your expensive fancy cocktails are insulting. I'm a white woman. I could go feed into capitalism. I know how to get that. I know how to get this through. I, I'm an English major. I know. I can do that. But I'll rather take me and mine and liberate somebody and get with the rest of the people and what the community looks like and build it. Do any of you, you just want that stiff suit? Justice for Patrick.
Others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
My name is Gus and I'd like to make a few announcements before I begin. Mayor Bliss, December 2024. John O'Connor, December 2024. Kurt Repert, December 2022. Joseph D. Jones, December 2022. Melinda Isasi, December 2024. Sanita Lanier, December 2022. Nathaniel Moody, 2024. Remember those names and dates because that's when these soulless, spineless, bootlicking, greedy slugs terms end. It's time for the people to be in office, not corporate DeVos and Van Andel sellouts. It's been a second since I've been to one of these meetings. I would have loved to come to the past few meetings, but watching live streams, it seems like it wouldn't have done anything anyway since you all are so incomprehensibly more upset over cuss words than murder by your own police force. I am so tired... Don't say that. They're fine. You're the one disrupting me. I am so tired of these bullshit respectability politics. Why do my peers, my black peers especially, Mayor Bliss, have to bow to you on bended knee and kiss your rings in order for you even to begin to consider them human, worthy of respect? But when they swear or yell or show any sign of what you might deem unruly or disruptive, suddenly you don't see them as people. You see them as threats, as threats to you and your ivory towers and golden thrones of power as you sit up there and look down on your noses at us, as you interrupt us and silence us. We don't owe you anything. We don't owe you respect. We don't owe you, and I'm sorry, excuse me, please thank you. We don't owe you censorship. We don't owe you compliance. We don't owe you that Michigan nice. We don't owe you anything at all. We don't owe you anything because you work for us. Y'all need to do something drastic because at this point, none of y'all are going to have jobs. But back to GRPD, since Patrick Leoya's murder, justice for Patrick Leoya. I have only seen GRPD become more and more bold, more brutal, more overkill. Just an hour before this meeting began, GRPD had seven cop cars for what was originally two black activists' arrests. Some of our comrades went down to support since, you know, they're both black women and have a significantly higher chance of being brutalized and killed, which led to two more arrests. Seven cop cars for four people. How does that math add up? Seven for four. It seems like every day now, multiple times a day, I get an alert about GRPD advancing on someone with guns drawn, about GRPD tackling people off of a motorcycle and brutalizing them, about GRPD arresting minors with no parent or guardian present, about GRPD holding kids hostage at gunpoint. All of these events and more have occurred in the past month since Patrick Leoya's death. How is this getting any better? Now, I'm from the boonies, somewhere y'all have never been to, let alone know it existed from out in nowhere, Hicktown Farland. You know why pig farmers cut the tusks off, snip the tails? Because once pigs get a taste of blood they can't stop, they'll kill and kill and kill until they can't kill any...
Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you. Okay, your time's up. Thanks. Okay, enough.
People are pretty angry, huh? So there's this thing that happens when a community goes through something like the cops murdering Patrick, what just happened. And that is that a lot of new people who weren't paying attention before get activated. They get jolted out of their apathy. And then they watch things like the city commission meeting and they're like, my word, why is everyone so rude to the city commissioners? How is that going to affect anything? You really need, these people aren't going to listen to you, not understanding what you all and we all know, which is what has been happening for the last two years. Why don't we talk to you, Roslyn? Is it because we've been asking you for two years to stop the GRPD, which you are theoretically in charge of, from beating our friends' asses on the streets? That's what we've wanted. So, you know, peaceful protesting and being tackled from behind by bike cops, from having your arm almost broken by city employees, how would y'all feel if at work, right, this is your job, you were being sexually harassed every single month, maybe once a month? And you were going to your boss and you were saying, hey, being sexually harassed by someone you employ, what you gonna do? I think we all know that a company knows they're liable, but I don't think you all know that you have a responsibility to stop your employees from hurting people. We got some items up here. Number four, we're supposed to feel like this is a safe space. I don't feel safe. My people don't feel safe. But you will stop us for profanity. You don't actually want everyone to feel safe. You want to feel safe. We don't want you to feel unsafe, but we don't want to feel unsafe anymore either. Number five, do not request or expect comment from the commission. While y'all have emphasized that over the last two years real well. Do you know that the first step to healing is feeling like you've been heard? Is feeling like the entity you're talking to, the agree, the person you have an grievance with feels like they understand what they've done to you? We do not feel like you as a city body understand what you have done to activists and the BIPOC communities of Grand Rapids. And we would just really love it if someone, one of you, just a one, Melinda, I would actually love it to be you. You're the only one I still slightly respect. We would just love it if you would acknowledge our pain, what we've been through, the fact that your employees have continuously been hurting our friends. I don't think you would put up with that either. I think you would come up and say fuck the GRPD.
Thank you.
Sorry, give me a sec. Rise in COVID cases. Anyway, my name is Dyson. You guys probably all seen me before. I've come to many of these meetings and I think one thing I've, I've always noticed is all of you act like politicians and none of you act like activists. So I, I remember there was, going, going a little bit back to an incident where a man was punched repeatedly in the face by the Grand Rapids Police Department to the point where Brandon Davis responded on Facebook with the comment that the Office of Oversight had no power to even like really look at the situation, request unedited reports from the police, request like body camera footage and get it immediately. None of those things were within their capability. And you guys all expressed that that had nothing to do with city laws, but everything to do with state laws. And while that, while that may be true, there's nothing you guys can directly do to change those state laws. If I were to go to the governor, like Governor Whitmer, and I were, and I were to request change in state laws, I'm, I'm just a citizen of Grand Rapids. You are either the mayor, city manager, or city commissioner of Grand Rapids. You guys have a lot more, you guys have a lot, what you guys say has a lot more weight at state levels. So even if, even if you guys don't have direct power over state legislature, none of you guys took the act, took the activist standpoint and said, even though we cannot directly affect these laws, we have voices, we have voices of our own and we have power and placements and politic, and political, I guess, standing to make requests to the state legislature. And I didn't see any of you guys do that. And that was one of the most disappointing things is that all of you guys here have acted like politicians and I have seen no activists. If, I want, I want activists to be politicians. I want politicians to be activists. They're not two separate things. I, all of, all of you guys here, I have not heard one of you use the word killed or murdered to describe what happened to Patrick Leoya. You say police-involved shooting. If you were to just say the words police-involved shooting, maybe the police officer got shot. It's not specific. It doesn't, it doesn't invoke the emotional response that it should that Christopher Scher executed, shot point-blank in the back of the head, point-blank in the back of the head. Okay, any, whatever's lead, whatever's leading up doesn't matter because think about how purposeful point-blank in the back of the head is. There is no, there's no way that that can be self-defense. There's no way point-blank in the back of the head is self-defense. If you have someone on the ground and you can shoot them point-blank in the back of the head, you have already subdued them. Christopher Scher is a murderer and needs to be charged, arrested, and locked away, and the key needs to be thrown away.
Thank you. Your time's up.
Now.
All right, others who wish to be heard?
My name's Carrie. You've heard from me a few times already. Mayor Bliss, I've met you personally a few years ago when I was one of the board members of the National Association of Women in Construction, and we invited you to come speak to us during Women in Construction Week. And I looked up to you then and I thought that you were progressive and you were, you know, going to make changes here in Grand Rapids. I'm disgusted now also, as a previous speaker said. You know, I'll reiterate again. I'm a military veteran. I hold a couple of bachelor's degrees. I've been an accountant for over 20 years, a well-educated woman. I've also been an activist for over 30 years. I lived in LA 30 years ago when Rodney King happened. I was there when the city burnt down and I saw the changes that happened in LAPD after that happened. Sadly, I see that coming to GRPD now. Because nothing is being done to change the course of what GRPD is doing. One week ago, I stood up here and spoke when you were not in the room about the previous day, last Monday, when I was sitting by myself at 6:00 PM in Veterans Park, at the fountain, and a GRPD vehicle chose to drive from Fulton Street on the sidewalk, coming up behind me on the sidewalk, and proceeded through the park next to me, back down onto Library Street. For no reason, no lights, no sirens, just an intimidation tactic because they know we're out there at 6:00 PM every single night for Patrick Leoya. Tonight, we got the text message that one vehicle was pulled over with two of our activists in it. I was the second vehicle unseen. My passenger jumped out. She was the third person arrested. The next vehicle pulled up, they arrested one of those passengers. Seven GRPD vehicles sitting there. For three of our vehicles sitting there. For no reason. No reason. Nobody resisted, nobody was doing anything. It's ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Justice for Patrick.
Thank you.
I was in my zone. I was in my zone. I'll be looking forward to the first city commission meeting in 2023 when y'all actually dance so I can get my groove on with y'all. But nah, uh, what's up commissioners, what's up city? I want to thank everybody that be out there in the 3rd Ward, in the trenches, on the southeast side, that walks up to me and they tell me, hey, D. Jones, I appreciate your work if nobody else tell you, I appreciate it. I appreciate those people that reach out to me because I do this from the kindness of my heart and the passion of my heart. When I did these participatory budgeting events, the city did not offer to pay me, nobody offered to pay me. I wanted to educate the community and be able to educate them on these opportunities. Also, Kent County, I seen that Kent County yesterday, I seen the commissioner and the mayors were talking about this, but Kent County actually has $74 million, but I believe overall, they have $137 million or $127 million for proposals and projects. So, I would want people to go to the county because obviously people don't go to the county. But people need to go to the county and try to tap into these funds because it's almost amphitheater money. Like I said a couple weeks ago, it's almost $137 million from the county that we can utilize. I wish the county would try to bring some of those dollars to the city, maybe a couple million dollars for the next participatory budgeting process. That would be pretty cool, I would like to see that. I would like to see more partnership between the county and the city. I want to make sure that I really shout out all of the elder people, the, the younger people that appreciate my work because people that know me know that I don't want any attention, I don't need the cameras. I want to shout out, I want to shout out ABC 13 because they actually were the only person when I actually held it, hosted a participatory budgeting process event. That was the only media platform that actually gave me a whole full article on the participatory budgeting. Not any of my company, not anything, but to help the community, you can look it up. So, I appreciate ABC 13 on your side because that was the only people when I actually created the digital flyer, did all of the canvassing, that actually helped me get that out there. So, I appreciate it because the 3rd Ward is the least invested Ward. And I appreciate Commissioner Lanier, if nobody appreciates your work, I appreciate you talking about giving people that may have lost their property an opportunity to get compensation on their property if they get a foreclosed property they can't afford to stay there. Because regardless if you own city government or not and you lose your home, you gonna want some type of compensation if you lose it all. So, I appreciate you saying that because that's, it's not going to be at the city's advantage. If they could potentially get a property at, like you said, $15,000, the city could get that, but if somebody lose a property that was $150,000, somebody's going to want some type of compensation from that because somebody's going to profit whether it's the city or the retailer or the nonprofit developer. And so, I appreciate that because that's actually showing transparency and not showing that people are greedy. I know that a lot of people are greedy and I really appreciate that. I appreciate the work of this body. I don't want, I'm not, I'm not ass kissing, I've never asked y'all to, I've never tried to do anything like that. Excuse my language, but I'm just being very genuine and real and I appreciate the work and I'll continue to do the work. We're hosting a meeting for the Hispanic community on Thursday for the participatory budgeting process.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi. Adrian Mull, again. I know we need cops sometimes. Things don't happen on purpose or in any other circumstance. Either way, we need cops. Same with freedom of arms. We, um, some of the states have less murder rates since they have freedom of arms. I'm not saying you, this is Chicago and we don't have as much criminal, criminal records as Chicago. If there is a, if there is a rule that says we can't have guns, why would the, the people that are arresting care since they're illegal anyway? They can have anything if they are doing a bad choice. Anyway, I came up here mostly because I want to talk about the building. Why wouldn't the owner want to take a loan out? Because that is a private owner's thought, a decision. If we are going to spend the budget on the, some fundings for the buildings, why can't a owner decide to go to a bank if the bank does, doesn't decide on his thought on that is the bank's decision and the owner's downfall? To have funding from the city, if I were to the, to be the person who gets paid from the city, I would be really happy because a big income, a, who wouldn't want big income? Same with Section 8, that is a lot of income.
Thank you, your time's up. Thanks.
My name is Nate, resident of Grand Rapids for the last nine years. I want to start by addressing Mayor Bliss's censorship of citizens during public comment at the last two commission meetings, as well as her threats of censorship tonight. Mayor, you have developed a pattern of cutting the mic of speakers who use profanity citing meeting rules that profanity is prohibited. And as others in the room have noted, Supreme Court has ruled consistently that profanity cannot be banned under the First Amendment. In his 1971 ruling in Cohen versus California, Supreme Court Justice John Marshall Harlan warned that, quote, "Governments might soon seize upon the censorship of particular words as a convenient guise for banning the expression of unpopular views," end quote. Also, in 2015, the Michigan State Legislature repealed an outdated law that criminalized profanity. So, Mayor, unless you're interested in violating state law and court precedent, I suggest you cease the threats of censorship because if you make good on them, a lawsuit will come and the city will lose that lawsuit. Because of the steep burden of proof required not only under Supreme Court precedent, but that of the Miller test. And one other thing. In GRPD's incident report filed for the murder of Patrick Leoya, two officers that arrived on scene after the murder, Officer Timothy Johnston and Officer Case Weston, both stated that Christopher Scher's body camera was still active and still recording. This contradicts Chief Winstrom's statements that Scher's body camera was turned off or deactivated prior to the shooting. So, either Winstrom is lying or his officers can't determine something as simple as whether a body camera is on or off, despite all this extra training and taxpayer money that has been thrown at the department in recent years. So, which is it? Is Chief Winstrom lying? Or are his officers woefully unqualified? Which is it, Eric? Where's the rest of the body camera footage? Yeah, I'm talking to you. Justice for Patrick.
Good evening. Jesus Christ is king. Not only is he king, but he is the king of kings.
Let him speak.
Hear the word of the living and holy God. In Matthew 28:18, Jesus says of himself, "All authority in heaven and earth has been given to me."
Let him speak. He has a right to be-
Paul 1:15 through 17.
Hold that for a minute.
Speaking of Jesus-
He has a right to be heard just as much as you do.
He is the image of the invisible God, the firstborn of all creation.
Let him speak and don't disrupt him.
For by him all things were created, and heaven and on earth, visible and invisible, whether thrones or dominions, or rulers or authorities. All things were created through him and for him, and he is before all things, and in him all things hold together. You see, all the thrones, dominions, and rulers and authorities have been given their positions not for themselves or for the people, but for Jesus Christ. In other words, you are obligated to him. And if someone in higher authority commands you to do anything-
Stop disrupting him.
-that would be sin against the God who made you, then you are obligated to obey God rather than men. Philippians 2:9 through 11. Therefore, God has highly exalted him and bestowed on him the name that is above every name, so that at the name of Jesus every knee should bow, in heaven and on earth and under the earth, and every tongue confess-
Let him speak.
-that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of God the Father. Also, in Romans 13:1-4, the Apostle Paul tells us that those in government have been put there by God and that the purpose of government is to reward good and punish evil. You see, God says in his word that he hates the hands that shed innocent blood. And also in Genesis 9:6, it says, "Whoever sheds the blood of man by man shall his blood be shed; for God made man in his own image." Proverbs 11-
Let him speak.
-12. Rescue those who are being taken away to death. Hold back those who are stumbling to the slaughter. If you say, behold, we did not know this, does not he who weighs the heart perceive it? Does not he who keeps watch over your soul know it? And will he not repay man according to his work? There's a group of people in this city who are being led to death every week and this city and its leaders are responsible for not only allowing it, but approving it. I am speaking of the slaughterhouse on 320 Fulton Street, which slaughters 50-ish or more unborn human lives every week.
Stop it, let him speak.
...intend of allowing this evil and become a sanctuary for the defenseless and most vulnerable of the image bearers of God. Protect the innocent. Rescue those being taken away to death and being led to the slaughter. Hear this word of-
Stop it. Stop disrupting him.
...from God's word-
Stop disrupting him.
...to permit evil. Jeremiah 18:6-10, the Lord speaking-
We're going to recess.
Behold, like the clay of the potter's hand-
You know what, I'm just going to-
...and so are you in my hand, oh house of Israel.
We're going to adjourn.
Anytime I declare concern in nation or kingdom-
We're adjourned, we're adjourned.
...that I will fuck up and break down, destroy it. And if that nation concerning which I have spoken-
So, we're adjourned.
...currents from this evil, I will relent of the disaster that I intended to do to it. And if at any time I-